October 2nd, Oak Ridge Town Council meeting. I'd like to give you the invitation. Please have Grishy and Donna give you the invitation along with the two of your associates, which will be the pleasure to stand as you're able. Come on up, Grishy.
Whoever would please remove the room that you're nominating as a chair? Let us pray. We give thanks for the state and the opportunity to gather service to our committee. We ask for wisdom, patience, and understanding as decisions remain silent. May every discussion be guided by fairness, respect, and a spirit of cooperation. Dear God, bless this council, our town staff, and all who are present, that together we may work for the good of all. Amen.
Whoever would please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, in the true body for which stands one nation under God, in the peaceful, the political, and justice for all. Say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item is to approve the agenda. If you have time, can you suggest that we add a short closed session discussing what we want to add?
I would that we approve the agenda with the addition of a closed session at the end of October 2nd.
Is there any discussion? All of us, please say aye. Aye. Close of that. Can I approve the minutes September 4th, 2025, regular meeting and also closed session? Do the motion approve the minutes? So. Is there a second? Second. All of us, please, any discussion? All of us, please say aye. Aye. Close of that. We are in Tree City, so once a year, we have to basically designate the day that we consider Arbor Day. So there will be beginning a proclamation about Arbor Day. At some point in the very near future, the tree board movement might be a tree in recognition of Arbor Day. Actually, I think we've been in Tree City for about eight or nine years now. Okay, proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Nebraska Board of Agriculture set aside a special day for planting of trees, and whereas the only call Arbor Day was first observed at the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, it is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, use oxygen and oxygen in product, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and harvestable products, and whereas trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, where the air plant are a source of joy, spiritual renewal, and whereas we have a tree committee which has led the town of Oak Ridge to being recognized for Tree City, USA since 2017, now therefore, I, Jim Kim, the mayor of the town of Oak Ridge, hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2025, as Arbor Day, the town of Oak Ridge, North Carolina. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and what runs to the well-being of this and future generation, and witness, therefore, I accept my hand and cause the seal of the town of Oak Ridge to be attached this second day of October 2025. And, okay, and then, and Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to offer another announcement. Back in February of this year, Scott Master-Madsinger asked me to nominate Troops, BSA Troop 600 for a 2025 Governor's Service Award. Now, these are very competitive, and with his help, I nominated the troop for the award, providing pages and pages of information about all of the accomplishments and all of the members of the troop. And recently, we learned that the troop had the good fortune, they earned it after all, to receive the award, the award in recognition of their outstanding service to veterans in our military, particularly noting that they placed 800 flags on the graves of area veterans at Veterans Day and Memorial Day, with the note from the state that Troop 600 has gone above and beyond expectations honoring the true spirit of volunteerism in our community. On behalf of this council and our community, I would offer our congratulations to Troop 600. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have representatives in the Sheriff's Department, but the crime statistics are in the back. If you're welcome to pick up a copy and take a look at them. Unfortunately, the Oak Ridge Fire Department.
Good evening, council. Oak Ridge Fire Department had a busy month in the month of September, so from 9:00 to 9:30, we ran a total of 80 responses. Thirty-five of those were considered all other responses, that would be reported smoke, gas in the area, a blocking car, a Humvee car. We had three false alarm, which is fire when it was unintentional. Two hazardous materials responses, this could be fuel spills, chemical, etc. We had three responses for arcing wires. Thirty-six emergency medical or technical rescue incidents, and one reported a street fire, which did not turn out to be a fire. Our membership included 433 training areas in November, September. And we, if you saw our placement, we recently received our next road, Tanker 51, a little taller than November 2023. We've got it in, training is ongoing, we have a heavy service in a couple of weeks. This will be again a sensitive department, we've waited a long time on this trip. So we're very excited to have it. You see that running around, please stop everybody, look at the truck, touch it. We want everybody to be as proud of it as we have.
That truck will be stationed over by the truck.
That truck will be stationed across from Oak Ridge.
Excellent.
We have an identical truck, it's a sister truck to it that's coming, we hope, we hope in sometime in May of next year.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So we drop one more for you, this is October's fire safety month, so we are excited to get started on our local education events. This year's thing, we talk about lithium ion battery fires. So that can be anything from your Tesla cars, we're seeing a lot of in the community, growing EVs, e-box, overboards, power tools, anything you have has a lithium ion battery in it. These things unfortunately, when they burn, they cause a tremendous amount of heat and fire and toxic chemicals. So we undertake especially training to learn to extinguish these fires. We've got some fires going on, everybody, put it in the back of the room, if anybody wants to pick them up and look at them. The big thing is we don't want you to leave your computers charging unattended, we don't want you to leave your phones charging unattended, please, stick them under your mattresses. Same time with TV cars, so we don't want you to blow them up and then drive away, we've got a beautiful one unattended.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We have our first public comment session. We have the community organizations tonight, I don't think I see anyone like you, but well, we're not talking to you for it, I hope you can play. You got something else for you?
No.
Oh, wait. We have a special section for you later. All right, but now, it's open to the community. If you'd like to come up and make a public comment, you have three minutes, we just ask you to give your name and address and a floor choice, you may speak about anything you'd like. If you want to speak. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. Mayor, council. Ty Lynton, 8874 Craven Lloyd Drive, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. Council, I appreciate the opportunity to address an issue of great importance to the citizens of Oak Ridge, taxation and fiscal stewardship. Our town is growing, we're seeing construction of high-value homes that are expanding our property tax base. Naturally, that base grows, so the overall revenue collected is by Oak Ridge. In light of this, the notion of 20% increase in property taxes would be relatively insignificant to our citizens and troubling. It is not the responsibility of local government to determine what constitutes significant or insignificant financial burden for families. Each household has its own unique financial obligation, and for many, even modest increases in taxation can represent a meaningful hardship. To suggest otherwise would be presumptuous and dismissive of the realities that citizens face. It's also been suggested that sales tax revenue is declining. Respectfully, this claim does not align with the economic trends. Costs of goods and services have risen across virtually every sector, groceries, dining, retail, and beyond. Let's keep in mind the sales tax revenue is directly tied to consumer spending as a percentage of that, of these transactions. The core challenge facing Oak Ridge is not insufficient revenue, it is excessive wasteful, and in some cases, mismanaged spending. Several high-profile projects have exceeded their original budgets, placing avoidable and unnecessary burdens on the town of Oak Ridge. This underscores the need for greater fiscal discipline, improved project oversight, which also constitutes having more than one bidder on certain projects, and more responsible long-term planning. Therefore, I call upon each candidate seeking election to make a clear commitment to the citizens of Oak Ridge. Will you pledge to maintain a revenue-neutral tax rate and reject any tax increases during your term of service? This is a straightforward question that deserves a straightforward answer. As from my position, I will make the commitment if elected, I will not support tax increases. Instead, I will work to identify areas of concern, improve financial accountability, and pursue alternative solutions that allow us to meet the needs of a growing community without placing additional burdens on our citizens. In conclusion, Oak Ridge does not have a taxation problem, it has a spending problem. Addressing this requires not more revenue from our citizens, but stronger fiscal responsibility from our leaders. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Yes.
Hi, sorry, I didn't hear the call here. Lindsey Carr, 6816 Comal Drive. As Ty brought up about fiscal responsibility, and a lot of other candidates running for office to address that issue, I'd like to address as well, since I am running for one of the town councils, it's this fall. You can find out more about me on Facebook at Lindsey Carr for Oak Ridge Town Council. But interesting, what you mentioned about the revenue-neutral tax rate, I agree with that, the only thing we would want to consider is inflation. Fortunately, inflation has been slowing, that shouldn't be such an issue, but as long as we do account for that with the revenue that we're taking into the town, I would also commit to that, to not increase taxes, and in some cases, depending on revaluations, perhaps lowering the tax rate. So, thank you for bringing up that point, Ty, just wanted to address that as another candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? She wanted my slide by a hundred second. Debbie, your hand went a little quicker than they can.
Debbie Shone, from Lady Travis, Oklahoma. I would just like to, I mean, I had not planned to speak on this subject tonight, so this is just off the cuff. When you consider revenue and taxes, and demand of the Oak Ridge residents, you can't just arbitrarily determine that you're not going to increase your taxes or increase your revenue when you have made promises, when you have promises to fulfill. So all I'm saying is that maybe other people don't realize that we work on budgets, and we have, we plan things years in advance, and we anticipate that plan, we anticipate on through with that plan based on the revenue that we expect to get. So just electing a new person to town council is not going to do a lot for several years to change that, and that's just my opinion.
Adrian McElroy, 5679 Timber Creek, Oak Ridge. Hello, Adrian, I'm Adrian McElroy, I'm running for Oak Ridge Town Council. I'd like to mention, if you want to learn more about me, of some of my campaign points, adrianforoakridge.com. I do at least weekly blog posts, I have a lengthy one about finance, if you'd like to hear my position, as it is a more lengthy answer, and I appreciate any comments, please go to my blog and you can read about that or contact me, I'd be happy to discuss it further. We are two weeks away from voting and 33 days away from deciding Oak Ridge's future. I'm not here to give slogans, I'm here to provide results. Some will talk about what they'd like to do, but I've been doing it. I have not been into elected office, but I've been working in this area for over 20 years and have real experience. I work in municipalities, nonprofits, public service, small and large enterprises, including dozens of Fortune 100 companies. These are not small engagements, I created those partnerships, I completed the RFPs, I perform regular audits, I perform stewardship reporting of these organizations across multiple entities, large and small. I manage large and small teams, I know how to build collaboration and get results. I'm also not far from politics. I've worked for over two decades, both in national, state, and local political practice groups, supporting causes that I would have attempted further, and more importantly, I've spent four years working within Oak Ridge. I know the staff, I understand the operations, and I've shut the council meetings regularly for years. I've made a career of creating efficiencies for people and processes. I understand operations, I lead with innovation, and I find solutions. I know how to protect assets, protect people, and our vision. We are at a crossroads in Oak Ridge. We don't have to look forward to finding what the effects of ineffective governance will get you. Summerfield's at risk of losing its charter, it's our lost 100 acres to Greensboro. Over $30 million of development is happening in the apartments for Phase 2, right outside Oak Ridge. PTI is booming, and there are going to be an excessive, well over 10,000 jobs from that growth. That's right next door, and that requires smart growth and smart planning for us to manage that. I don't think about the year, I think about the next decade. On Election Day, you're not just choosing a name, you're choosing a direction. I'm ready to serve, I'm ready to lead, and I'm ready to get to work for Oak Ridge. I'm asking for your vote, so we can do this together. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak? Did not propose that public comment session. The next item is some old business. We are here to consider creation and approval of the Addendum to Field Usage Policy of the Oak Ridge Youth Association. We've had this before for about a month and a half, at the same time with any member of council that has a question or any suggestions on alternatives. So I believe we should move forward with serious consideration of this, I'd make a motion to approve the Addendum to Field Usage Policy of the Oak Ridge Youth Association. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that, there's a discussion. Couple of quick comments. The youth association is struggling a little bit with understanding exactly how it provides with roster information. We've made it very, very clear, they will accept pretty much anything they want to give us, we don't need to take possession of their names. So that should not be an issue, they have their insurance taken care of. Turns out, except for one sport, they have the necessary insurance, now they have the necessary insurance for all sports. So I believe that's covered very well. We can definitely, we'll definitely work, continue to work with the youth association, iron out the roster, but like I said, we told them that people will take pretty much anything they want to give us, they meet their comfort needs and stuff like that. So with that, Mr. Grishy, you want any comments?
I just question, would that include just them giving us a number of their services? Or is it?
You've asked me a question, I would be perfectly comfortable with asking your accountant to give us a statement of roster. The accountant, I guess, if you share your legal requirement, to be honest about their recordings, I would be perfectly happy with that. Like I said, we may have heard, we'd be happy with pretty much whatever, we don't need to take possession of the data. Anyone else who wants to speak? That's it. Mr. Stone?
Would you, with the council, be willing to accept a friendly amendment to that? The bullet point number three that says Oak Ridge Youth Association is to mention rosters when the final lies? We can say that we'll accept anything, but the field usage policy says rosters? Can we just instead instruct the town manager to work with Oak Ridge Youth Association on a confirmation process that protects the identities of the children that are playing sports in our town? Would that be difficult? I would be perfectly happy to change your roster to head count.
What about saying something like just roster information, which we, you know, to be defined? Because I think the point is, if, as it has been in years past, it's been just fine to share complete roster information, I would like, I think it could be nice to have it if it's okay to have it, but roster information as defined by the town manager consultation with ORYA.
Like I said, I would be perfectly, this isn't a friendly amendment, I would be perfectly happy to accept the definition of roster to head count. And basically, the youth association would be certifying the head count, so I would accept that as a modification for where rostering at. And Mr. Bruce and Mr. Hollis, does that pass muster and make you comfortable?
Could you just repeat how we would?
I think what's being suggested is instead of Oak Ridge Youth Association submitting rosters for final lives, is to exchange rosters for head count?
Yeah, Oak Ridge residents. How about the Oak Ridge residents? Any other? Mr. Stone? Mr. Hart?
I would be okay with the suggestion. Early on, when I was learning about ORYA, I stated in this council that my concern was looking at the trends over the last five years, and which was a highly percentage of Oak Ridge residents who do photo events. I had privileges, I've been a couple of years, as you said earlier this year, to understand, I understand that the desire and need to have children from outside Oak Ridge play on ORYA sports fields, hard fields and flat fields, with ORYA activities, but I think what we need to look at is the trends of our citizen children that are playing on those fields, and important to me is looking long-term, and sometime, sometime somebody's going to come to this council, this town, and say, we need, we need to build another field, or we need to put a softball field or baseball field in. If we do not have the information, how do the kids in Oak Ridge are playing, I'm not sure we can actually effectively decide, from a financial standpoint, if they have a need or whatever investment in the fields, if in fact, if I'm, if it continues. So I think the most important information is the, is the total head count of Oak Ridge, so that we can continue to follow the trends of children playing, children in Oak Ridge, playing hard fields versus kids going to the outside.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm fine with the change, I feel that if roster information is available, it can be shared, it would be nice, but I trust the leadership of ORYA, especially in consultation with our staff, and I'm excited to, you know, continue supporting their programs as we've done for 15, 20 years. This is a great thing, and it's a great thing for our area youth.
Any other comments?
Continue to amend that to, to give it?
I'm sorry, could you?
Can we amend that for all?
Yeah, the second.
The town and local citizens. I'm sorry. So Jim was only in the top of the list, too. We will get it over, we'll get the head count.
Well, we're only getting head count of Oak Ridge residents.
That's right. So can we amend it?
We need votes.
Oak Ridge and non-Oak Ridge.
We need to amend.
So since you made the motion, you need to accept?
Okay, that's fine, yes, we can take a total head count, total head count, and head count by residents. Okay.
I mean, technically, we should vote it down and redo it, but if you seconded it, you're okay with it.
Yes. All of us, please say aye. Aye. Close. Town manager for you.
Just to recommit, appointments for you this evening, I can take them separately or altogether, any pleasure?
We can do it together.
Reappointment of Jim Barbary to the triad municipal ABC board, appointment of Frank Campion to the Mountains to Sea Trail Committee, and appointment of Stuart Beast as an alternate to the water advisory.
Here's a motion to move.
Some of you.
Any discussion?
Great, great folks, and we're so excited that they're going to continue or start surveying of these committees.
Any other further discussion? All of us, please say aye. Aye. Close. Any other business?
That's all.
I think this will still be something you do, is consideration of approval of design engineering water main from the town for loop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. There is an addendum in your package to the town's engineering services agreement with the Wooten Company to include surveying and design of a 12-inch water line along NC 150 from Lindville Road to NC 68, and south on 68 Lindville Road, and an 8-inch line along Lindville Road from 68 to 150. This is what we have been referring to as the Town Corloupe. As council knows, the Wooten Company is currently designing the water main that will run from the county line all the way up 150 to the tower that's being erected behind Town Hall. This would be an extension of the design work that they're currently completing with, and are about to begin construction. The proposal would also include the design of a service line that provides a connection to the JPC utility system, which is a publicly regulated community well system that serves Oak Ridge Commons, Oak Ridge Marketplace, and several additional outposts. The owner of the JPC utility system has committed to connect to the town water system subject to regulatory approvals. At its meeting on September 10th, the Water Advisory Committee reviewed the proposal and recommended approval to the council. Committee further recommended construction of a portion of the Town Corloupe water main to extend the line as part of our current contract of part construction to Oak Ridge Commons, which could be enacted as a change order to our existing contract. I will note that that's a separate process that I would bring to council after the water line is designed. Wooten Company has estimated six months maximum for design and permit approval. That's a worst-case scenario according to our principal engineer. Construction, including design to extend water to the JPC utility system is estimated at $420,000. To do the entire Town Corloupe construction is estimated at $1.759. Request before you this evening, however, is simply for design and engineering of that loop, which is at $109,900. I will note that the town, even accounting for all of our current commitments for construction of the water main and the water tower, we still have $196,000 remaining in our final grant allocation of, from the state. We also have $1 million in our general fund that's restricted for water. The Water Advisory Committee notes that the addition of the JPC utility system to the Oak Ridge water system will have immediate and a significant impact on the financial stability of the system. There are updated water system revenue and expense worksheets that are attached to your packets, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm not going to go through those until you're done. Request for council tonight, therefore, is to approve the proposal from the Wooten Company to survey and design the Town Corloupe.
And before we ask for the motion, is there any initial questions, Mr. Grishy? That question's up for this. Mr. Stone?
No questions.
Mr. Hart?
No questions.
Mr. Snyder?
No questions.
I have no question. With that, is there a motion to approve the request?
So.
There a second? Sorry. Mr. Stone, would you like to comment? Anyone else have to comment?
I would just like to say, as is honored by the board of the committee, this, this evaluation is taking some time, but with the, with the activities and the fact that the JPC water system, whatever the justice is called, is willing to come into play with the town, this is a major step forward for the whole, financially for the whole municipal water system that we're putting into Oak Ridge, starting very soon, starting certainly with the tower that will be built in the next couple of months. So then, after working through water, I think for three years, maybe even four years, that's in and out, but we're in a tremendous spot with this, and because we have the majority of the money already provided by grants. So I'm full, full steam ahead. So full steam ahead.
Yeah, we did it. And our water system, I just want to point out, is moving forward because of, in my mind, three key things. First, the vision of those who believe that it is possible and persevered and planned for it. Secondly, our success in attracting county and state funding for this project, nearly nine million so far. Almost miraculous for a small town. And thirdly, the confidence that we could build a future customer base. That's, I guess, part of the vision. I'm so thankful to those who shared this vision. And of course, it's easier to share it now, that so much is already in hand, including this promise of serving Oak Ridge Commons. And I just want to recall that there have been significant hesitations along the way, but we are truly arriving. However, with all the confidence and the excitement that we have right now, there are challenges ahead. Because to continue building our water system, we're going to have to invest increasing amounts of funds, some hand funds, since not everything will come from grant funding. But for now, full steam ahead, as Mr. Hart said. Thank you.
The connection of the commons basically accelerates our timeline about five years. We anticipated we probably would be cash positive in about five years. Over those five years, we accumulate enough customers basically to cover the costs. With this connection, we basically accelerate that basically pretty much five years. So we also have commitments from the elementary school to connect, and also one or two commitments from other businesses along, well, the state of Quaysberry Division to connect. So we're pretty much really close, and also Mr. Anderson has committed to connecting also. I didn't want to speak without at least positive confirmation. I've heard it, that you said we would connect those, so I'll make sure. So I mean, we're pretty much, like I said, we're basically with this one connection, the big connection. It basically accelerates our timeline basically five years, then one. So it's a really great movement. So any further discussion? If not, all those say aye?
Aye.
Close. You have a carry. Next is discussion, security of town council. Mr. Bruce, I think you were the main person asking questions over council, but then I'd like to ask you maybe start the discussion.
Well, we live in a crazy world right now, as you can tell from the past few months. I fully support security guard in here at the town council meetings, but also the support having a study or some training for staff. So that's my position.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah, this proposal is rightly intended to provide safety and security for the citizens that accompany these town council meetings as well as for our town staff. I don't believe that anyone in the town council is ever going to be able to guarantee the safety of our citizens that are sitting in these chambers. The town council has protection built in, but this is about handling safety and security for the staff, for the citizens. It's a minimal cost, maximal impact. We certainly, three thousand dollars a year is reasonable for protection of citizens. I'll add, from a more global perspective, I hope that there are multiple citizens inside of this building that are exercising the constitutional right of keeping their arms with the protection of themselves and the people around them. As it said, in seconds count, police are meant to water. This is just a step in the right direction, and makes someone else raise a vote.
Mr. Hart?
I truly support, at least for the short term, a security guard here in these council chambers. But I also agree that we need to do an assessment of our security. The mayor has offered at least an alternative with his American Cyber Defense Agency national lines to help us. There are also some very practical things that we can do, not relative to securing our town offices while we're in these council chambers. I don't think it's necessary that they go over there. But anyway, there may be, I think there may be several things we can do. You can comment through evaluation services or like this. I'm okay with the short term use of security here in council chambers. I think we can do evaluation of other steps that we can do to secure these chambers.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. A question for staff. It's my understanding that concealed carry is not allowed in government buildings. Is that accurate?
I'm sorry, I didn't look back at that.
Did you get any thoughts on this?
I can't recall.
Okay.
I can look that up for you, but I can't recall if there was an exception to that of buildings.
I thought there was a... Anyway.
I think you can post it, and then it's not allowed, but...
That's a common way, because the statute had things where you could opt in or out. Whether it's parks or public buildings or that kind of thing. I'd have to look. We're not currently posting, is that correct?
Correct.
No.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's reasonable and even a priority that every public gathering, including our town meetings, have security for the protection of residents, council members, and staff. The deterrence effect of having security law enforcement personnel here is well documented. Often those who want to commit some sort of violent act or are disturbed in some way seek unprotected soft targets that are not protected by this kind of staff. Just like security systems in your home, security personnel at a public meeting will make people feel more comfortable and will make the meetings safer for them. There are many programs and templates for risk assessment, and they're all good starts. But we can do this simultaneously with providing actual security, which I think we're all in agreement. And I think we can just start thinking about things like, yeah, should that door be closed? Should the door to the staff offices be locked while meetings going on? Should we have two entrances in here? When committee meetings meet, should they not lock the door fifteen minutes after the start of the meeting? Things, practical, common sense solutions like that. And this is something I learned the importance of when someone walked in unexpectedly to acquire rehearsal at church last night. We weren't prepared, and I'm not sure we did all the right there, but fortunately, it served only as a reminder that we need to develop some protocols and ways of dealing with this, and no harm is caused. There are many resources, but one of them is here with us tonight, Adrian Edmond-Rod, who addresses security systems for a living. He was a huge help with planning and installing our arc security systems, and he can help us craft policies to improve security here in town hall in addition to all the other things we talked about. This all boils down to common sense. The costs are really nothing compared to any danger to our residents. Thank you.
The main thing I want to make sure we do is that we take a deliberate and thoughtful approach to what we should be doing. As Mr. Hart pointed out, federal government offers a free security analysis assessment program, where they will come in in conjunction with sheriff and take a look at your building, and basically make recommendations about doors and security, things like that, but also policies and procedures. We also should look at, you know, there are also free programs, like active shooter programs. We're able to deal with active shooters. I think we need to take a comprehensive look at it, so that we make sure we're spending money effectively and appropriately, to make sure that we're actually getting results based upon the money we're spending. I cringe when we say it's a small amount of money. It's still taxpayer money. So, and also we need to take a look at whether or not we should be doing something for our works committees. I mean, it's easy to say, "Hey, we need something here." What could we need something for our roles and committees? So that's why I think we need to do a full assessment. Like I said, the state government has a program that they will come and assess your situation and do that. The sheriff's department has very clearly said that it's unlikely we would be able to get a sheriff in system. So one of the questions I would have is a private security guard. As a presiding officer, I can point out someone and say, "This person, you should leave the room." The question is whether a private security guard is actually has the ability to remove that person from the room legally. And that's a question under close to our town attorney to see whether or not, if a private security guard can actually physically remove someone.
Well, I can speak to that under 158-404, which is the statute in criminal procedure act, when persons can be arrested in state. Private security guard is not a sworn law enforcement officer, is a private citizen. They're still a private citizen. And they do not have the power to arrest, but there are exceptions where a private citizen can detain persons, escort the front of businesses, and even hold them to law enforcement officer to show up and then deal with them, and breach of peace is one of those. So if you were to hire a private security person as opposed to, say, an off-duty LEO sworn officer, they would have the power to then, presumably have the training too, to detain or breach of peace, because if the providing officer says, "I'm disrupting a meeting," that's a breach of peace. So that's how you work that in to a detention now. The person might leave, just go away, when you say you have to leave the room. But, you know, if you have a protocol, you look at it, it could be held. It would not be a false arrest, as long as you've summoned law enforcement to come deal with the situation.
I think that's why we need to do a full assessment of what we're allowed to do, what we can and can't do. And that's why I have a little caution, a little concern that we're just putting a security guard in here, but we don't have policies and procedures in place to define what we expect that person to do and what we're allowed, legally allowed it for that person to do. So I think that's why, you know, I will probably make a separate motion to ask that we put for a, or someone else can make a motion, doesn't matter. But separate from the motion of putting a security guard in there, we need to do a full assessment of what we should be doing and what we're allowed to do. It's like I said, a private security guard, this obviously is a limitation of what they're allowed to do. Basically, what I've heard is that he can detain them, but can he actually physically remove them from the room?
Well, yes, they can, because of that statute, because it says so. It insures them and town from false arrest accusations, I don't know if that... To keep the peace, where you identify a breach of peace, disruption of the meeting, and you request the person you've now hired to be here, just escort them. Again, part of the vetting process of hiring such a person is, like, do you have experience in doing this, can you do this? Because that's where we're hiring new potential. Take somebody effectively in temporary custody and remove them. Presumably, under protocol, if that happened, they'd be dealing physically with the person. Somebody in staff would summon the...
But there's an extra...
Sheriff's Department.
But it's actually the point, we'd have to make sure that the private security company has the training to do that.
Of course, that'd be part of your vetting process.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying is deciding to have a security guard here, there's a lot of stuff that I think we need to go through instead of just saying, "Hey, show up next month." And that's why I think we need to have a deliberate approach to this, to make sure that we properly think this out, so we don't have unattended consequences.
Yes, sir. Now, again, town has done this in the past. Two, three days for different periods of time, some members of this council are called. And I believe those were all duty...
Yes.
LEOs. And so, but they're currently certified persons with powers of arrest. And that's also provided for by statute.
Yeah.
And they're working off duty, they can be armed, they can make arrests. So, but that's become very tight to hire those people. It's more difficult than...
They flat out said, "We're around like we're going to get them consistent."
Right. So now, do private companies have LEOs on staff? Working second jobs or subsequent professional gigs? They still have their certifications, so they can be armed and make arrests? I don't know.
Yeah.
That's part of, again, you have your vetting process.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, if you'd like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we start a security term at the next council meeting of November sixth for a temporary period not exceeding fiscal year within June 30th or 31st. Also, we can look for any assessment, training that we give for the staff. So that's what I'm...
Is there a second? Is there? I'd like to offer a little more detail to what we should do. I would like to add or make this separate motion to the view, I would say we request a no-cost physical security assessment of town hall council meeting procedures from CISA, check the service advisors, and coordination with the county sheriff's office, and turn within sixty days with assessment findings and a tiered security policy that defines baseline measures and objectives for law enforcement persons. Does that sound acceptable? Okay, I'm asking if you'll accept that as a...
I'm not sure, tiered?
No, no, it's adding to the motion. You already made a motion, you want security here in November. I'm adding that we also direct town manager to request a no-cost physical security assessment and also return within sixty days with assessment findings and a tiered security policy that defines baseline measures and objectives. So things like locking the doors, all that kind of stuff. Would you accept that as a...
Sure.
Okay. Discussion, you made the motion. Anyone else have any discussion? Do you have a pad here?
Um, I'm not. I guess I understand what you mean by tiered. But I just, the goal, I think, of this, if we all understand this correctly, is that we have operating policies in place and protocols. And I don't want this to turn into something where we use that process to argue ourselves out having either a deputy or a private security guard at our meetings.
Well, I would think as the data presents, the appropriate response is X, regardless of what that X is. I would think as responsible members, we would say, if X is what we should do, like if this assessment comes back and says we should do lock these doors, we do that. If the assessment comes back and says you should possibly consider law enforcement when you have a credible threat or when you have a conflict with the agenda. When I talk to other towns, town councils about what they do, for example, Pleasant Garden, when they have a contentious agenda, they coordinate with the sheriff, they have a sheriff in the area. So again, I would think that we go with the facts. So if the facts come back and say, "Hey, we should do X," we should give it serious consideration. We should just not accept that we should have security guard with power.
I just can't see that...
We said till the end of the motion, Mr. Snyder, and we're...
I'm just saying is that if the data comes back that we should change something, we should reconsider. I don't know what the assessment's going to factor. I'm just saying that if the assessment comes back and says you should do X, we should give it serious consideration. It's not opening the door, you will still have to go to do whatever you want to do. So if you guys are still in favor of a security guard, you can continue to have a security, even if it says you have... Don't even. So we're getting circular, but why do you get...
Either on the left or on something like that, or a number size.
I'm not saying to get rid of security, but that's not a... I'm not saying that's predetermined conclusion with the assessment. I'm just saying that's what the assessment has to say, and that's give it serious consideration. We can choose to ignore the assessment and do whatever we like.
Well, wait.
There still is, if there still is support for a security guard, you can continue to have a security guard.
I don't think any assessment or study can predict outlier events, which is what we're talking about here. We live in a low-prime area. We're not in danger right now of being hurt for rights in this building. I don't think so. Whoops, sorry. I had that off. What we're talking about is outlier events. And I think if you have confidence that this council can make appropriate decisions based on information, and information is a great thing, and a risk assessment is a great thing, and operating procedures are really important, and following those procedures is probably the most important thing.
And like I said, I just said, like I said, we're looking at what the assessment's going to yield and pass on. Okay. Any further discussion?
So for clarity, the motion is that we'll have security get a sheriff or other lots starting next month, and we're going to have an assessment on... next month, and we're going to have assessment on sixty days.
That the assessment within sixty days, we're asking staff to come back with a assessment findings and a tiered security policy, find baseline measures like possibly locking doors and stuff like that. And then council will look at it, because that's what we want to do.
Mr. Mayor, is this the proposal that the federal?
Yes.
Okay. I will note that that program may not be available for the next several weeks.
I understand, so if you need more time, that's not a problem. All right. If not, if not further discussion, all those fair to say aye?
Aye.
The opposed. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Ed, Ed, sir, sorry.
I'd like to follow up what I said. And I have to say, when I was first hired as a municipal attorney, which I almost remember once, I remember one of the council members saying, I'm tired of these attorneys today. I have to look something up, I'll get back to you. I want to hear it right now. Well, back then, we didn't have the internet.
Yeah.
So I can consult the statute, I want to answer that one question about municipal property, just to clarify before we leave the subject, that's chapter fourteen dash four fifteen point two three. And and that provides on municipal properties that, yes, it's opposed to processes, the clerk alluded to earlier, you can adopt the ordinance that allows you to post no concealed weapons on municipal properties, such as the town hall. Now, as to parks, a person permitting concealed weapons can still bring a weapon, drive into the park, but that you can make them leave it at the park in the garden. But you have to adopt the ordinance, and we've never done that, so that's that's what we're saying.
Actually, I believe, I thought we did address concealed carry in the park.
Oh, was it debated at one point?
We did.
Like I said, I thought we, I don't know.
And then, well, I, the evidence is there that apparently we didn't go that way, right? Because we don't have those concerns.
My understanding is that we we did, and you can have security carrying in the park except around the ball fields.
So are we posted?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so. We're not, we're not.
We're going to have a meeting here. Let's, yeah, let's, yeah, let's, let's make.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I might be out here two hours.
Let's make clarification.
If you want to.
We're not going to be able to sign anything tonight, but I should be, so let's make clarification of what we have. All right. Sandra, on.
All right. I'll give you financial report in a minute, but yes, I have not been joking about sneaking out in the middle of the night and tying to the town water line as soon as it gets past my driveway. I put up a couple of cones and everybody just drive around.
I am, I wish we'd have, were they able to hook a project out?
That's funny, I was thinking about that, a project, and here, the water's coming by. I maybe got to do this.
We digress, we digress.
We digress, but that would have been really neat. But on the financials, everyone should have got a copy of those. We did receive late this afternoon some updated numbers from the county. I did not get all of the reports to cross reference them, but I will send out the information to y'all tomorrow as soon as I can verify the collections matched, the reports from the tax department and the ACH, they all, we always check to match them up. But we did receive that wire transfer, email came in late this afternoon and in the reports, so I will verify that and notify you. For the month, we had our sales taxes, property taxes, first one is normal interest for September. We had some planning and zoning fees, the quarterly franchise taxes, which is telecom, video programming, electric power, and tight natural gas came in, historic preservation, excuse me, heritage, heritage, yeah, HBC, and the veterans honoring and donations, water enterprise fund has improved revenues and property taxes revenues. We are looking at investments in our banks. I got an option to move some money into BMO Federal at a very good rate. Mayor signed off on that check. Courier is meeting me tomorrow to transport the check, they'll get that put into the accounts. Monitoring those right now, interest rates are still along the lines of what we've seen. The commonsensical forecast is with rate dropping last month, and two months expected this month that the rates will, the offer will start dropping, but right now, I'm going on to the best rate I can get. With staff, grant compliance throughout the month, ARPA report, CIP, and work on the water system. So all of that, and then the other thing, I'll kind of knock out the so, the final audit work, field work was finalized last month. Still in touch with the loggers via email, they're still working on some things. Right now, tentatively, based on the original, we should be planning to appear for town council next month. That should be our timeframe. The other thing that I need to tell you about before I go through some of the numbers, as part of this, you know, when we go through, we talk about our fixed assets, our insurance system, kind of leaving municipalities, we received notice that the insurer has asked an appraisal company to appraise our fixed assets. And this is along the lines of what happened, I think it was five, six years ago. They have a third party service that would come out, very easy process, but I would get with them, and we will literally ride through the park and across the town property, mainly looking at the town hall and other structures, basically all the large structures, all the whales, the amphitheater, and a few other heavy assets. So basically, the way this is set up, we have time, so it's about a two hour window. I will meet, we will ride along, we've got to pull some information, and I will get with Bill, we did last time, had to pull some construction documents in our archives, we will have to pull some architectural forms, the ones that basically at the end of the project, it shows all the buildings in the different phases. They'll review them, make a few copies, make a few pictures, and then we'll get a report. Basically, they're looking for verification that our insurance is sufficient or insufficient. From that, last time came some recommendations on a couple of things that we add a little coverage, on a few things that we go with higher deductible and not cover them because the insurance was not cost effective. So it's all run a very positive process, last time it went really well. But that's coming in the month of November. Tentatively, I think it's around the eighteenth is what they're looking at. Once I have a absolute firm date confirmed, a few other details, I will advise staff, and we'll take care of that and report back to y'all. With that said, if you look through the financials for this last month, we're holding fairly strong in three point one million in assets, that we got fund balance of a little three million thirty seven, three second, three million thirty seven thousand. Last month was a very large month for property tax collection because of the discount and those things with the financial companies, we had a very large property tax collection come in. That'll taper down for the one we're receiving now, which is coming off of September, and we'll probably have a fairly low October, then November will start spiking up, December will be a fairly large one, and January will usually be a very large one as well. So I'm going to catch up with the people that changed the tax code, decided to pay the property taxes in this year to try to itemize, or whether they wait until the next year. So I have now lived long enough to see the itemized deduction rules come around full circle, I think this is my third time. But overall, very stable, process expenses are within the normal rounds, and moving forward on capital project funds. Bill's already let me know, Arch Duro is coming for the water main project, our tank project next week, so we're prepared for that. But overall, we're looking at everything, and it's all looking fairly good. Still have good relations with Guilford County on the revenue collections and information fronts. So overall, it looks good. But with that, that's everything for me.
Any questions? You just need to, this one finance, does it accept this finance officer's report?
Sorry, then we accept the finance officer's report as presented, sorry.
Any discussion? All those fair to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Committee reports. Water advisory committee. He's got a big smile.
Oh, yeah. Spencer Solomon, seventy nine seventeen, Quiet Place, Oak Ridge. Water advisory committee held its regularly scheduled meeting on September tenth, and the primary topic of this question was our recommendation to proceed with engineering of the town for loop, and we appreciate your approving that this evening. That is a huge step forward with the with the connection to the comments now being in place. We appreciate your approving Stuart Meese as well, he'll be a very valuable addition to the committee because of his expertise in the financial side of things. Just a few updates, the marketing brochure will be going out this month. I'll remind you of the two open house dates that we've set, Thursday to November thirteenth from four thirty to six thirty, Saturday, January tenth from ten thirty to twelve thirty for our citizens to come learn about our new water system. Just a side note, the water tower, and I think council knows this, but water tower is scheduled to be installed the end of this month, and that will be a very, very visible indicator of the progress that we're making. Committee is continuing to do its due diligence on a proposed tax amendment, reducing the number of lots in a subdivision required to have a community well system and alternatives to that requirement that were suggested by developers a few months ago. We should be finished with that process at our next meeting, and we should have a recommendation to P and Z and to council for your next meetings. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. This third presentation.
Good evening, Debbie Shone, LA five oh one, St. Sarah Farm Court. They did not meet for a regularly scheduled meeting in September. The Historic Heritage Grant Committee will meet next week to review grant requests from twenty one oh four, Earth Road, and AI Church. It's been very difficult to schedule all the volunteers involved in renewing grant requests, but now that the summer travel is ending, things should settle out a little bit and get back to them home. Maple Bay has completed the requirements for their grant, and the site was scheduled tomorrow. The Historic Oak Ridge Book Committee is excited to announce that the book is expected to arrive in the next couple of weeks and probably next week. We have developed a book policy and marketing strategy program that is quite evolved. In the meantime, open sales have already begun, and we're off to a good start. We're taking pre-orders and are set up this evening in the lobby after the meeting if anyone's interested. And the price of the book is twenty five dollars when purchased at home.
Thank you, I love them. I'm like, I'm like, ten. I do want to draw a little attention to your, we have posted on social media that the house, thanks to Sherwin, is available for the locations on the month, so if you're interested in the house, and I think there's some assistance going to be offered.
That's right. At this point, in my discussions with the owner, he's not sure to what extent the financial offer would be to help move the house, but the offer is is open, and and right now, we actually do have someone interested.
Excellent.
Thank you. Well done.
Any other question? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Why didn't you tell me? The plan of the week? Okay, they did, anything to report about that?
They approved two subdivisions.
And they also denied waiver on the sidewalk?
Yes.
All right. And there are, the applicant is thinking of handling us?
That's my understanding, yes.
Board of adjustment did not meet, round the seat.
I'm standing there, all five eight three nine, Bill of Ridge, here tonight representing the Mount to the Central Committee with a report of activities from September. The MST committee met here in the town hall on substitute day, September twenty third. We are excited to welcome members of the community, including our new committee member Frank McNeany. In addition, Jackson Helsley and his dad Andrew joined us. Jackson is a scout in troop one forty nine, and he presented his proposal for an Eagle Scout project to build on the Henwater Trail. He'll be developing and constructing informational informational signs to be placed along the trail that will educate visitors about the trail, wildlife, history, and geographic features. The committee is very excited about this project and we look forward to its completion later this year, and that would be basically the third Eagle Scout project for this year. Two workdays were coming in September on the trails behind the family carriage code developments. Both days focused on constructing a five new bridge near the trailhead behind Scuba Tools. This is the final piece needed to complete the trail. On the first workday, we had special guests, Grant Lorenz, executive director of the Friends of the MST, and Betsy Brown, associate director of the Friends of the MST, joined in to help. One more workday is needed to complete the bridge, which we have scheduled for October eleventh. The second workday is planned for October twenty second for regular trail maintenance. Put on your work boots and come and join us. The MST committee worked with the Friends of the MST to develop these small informational cards promoting our trails and the bridge, and the gate should be one, and then there's a staff in the back for anyone who wants to pick up one. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Constellation Ethan did not meet. Special guests?
Barbara Engel, eighty five twenty four, Roseville Drive. The Veterans Honor Room, we will have a special dedication for the war walk at the Veterans Day Ceremony. We continue to take orders for papers, we need to have a minimum order of twenty papers to send in an order. The nine eleven ceremony, the ceremony was held on Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty five, at the flagpole in the Oak Ridge Park at ten AM. Mike Stone was featured speaker and wore a different presentation of colors. Special thanks to Chief Ken Gibson from Oak Ridge Fire Department for providing two excellent speakers, firefighter Ruth Sanders from, what did you say, and volunteer champ Laners. Also, thank you to Chief Gibson for bringing over two of their fire trucks. Next year will be the twenty fifth anniversary of nine eleven, and we hope to make it a memorable occasion. Veterans Day Ceremony, the ceremony will be held on November eleventh, twenty twenty five, at the Veterans Honor Room at ten AM. Our guest speaker will be Christian Castelli. Christian is a Vietnam veteran, and his family has a long history of service to our nation. He also served as Green Bay Acreing Ray and led numerous special forces in hostile fire zones. He was awarded two Bronze Stars and a combat infantry infantry man's badge with a star. Jim Harden will speak as a representative from the town council. We hope that you will be able to join us. Heritage Day, we are disappointed that the Heritage Day event had to be canceled due to weather. We hope to have our muffin making contest back again next year. We hope to have our muffin making contest back again next year. Light up the night, we are gearing up for light up the night activities. Additional lights, stars, and a special light up Santa and his reindeer have been ordered. We will be looking for volunteers to help put up the luminaries on the weekend after Thanksgiving. We hope to see you all there. Any questions or comments?
Great job, close.
Thank you.
And I made three minutes.
Yeah. Tree world.
Good evening, Juan Idorf, eighteen fifteen, Oak Ridge Road. The tree committee met this morning to decide on the type and location of the Arc Day tree planting, which helps fulfill our Tree City USA status. And, um, a couple of choices that we came up with, our first choice would be the American chestnut tree. Second choice would be the post oak. Those decisions are based mainly on the historical importance of those, both, both of those trees, prevalence in our region, and potential size and beauty. That depends on availability for fall planting, since this is the best time to plant any trees. And the place that we decided upon is the knoll that's overlooking the Veterans Honor Room, approximately thirty, forty yards south.
And, and I admit, I, uh, we have two pomegranate trees in the park, and they're dropping their fruit. I've never eaten a pomegranate straight off the ground, and I was surprised how sweet they are. They're pretty impressive. So if you're, if you're so inclined, take a walk over there, uh, and run around, just get them all eaten.
Never, never, never eat them all.
No, never eat them all. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, finance committee did not meet. We are getting close, though, that, that finance committee will be, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec, I apologize.
Thank you, Nick and Matt, Q Chairman, Parks and Rec. And we did not meet, we didn't have any urgent items, but I did want to just call out, um, there are final news in the park for twenty-twenty-five event is October eleventh, feature virtual vinyl, and that'll be from five a.m.
Yeah, take notes a little earlier because the date, the date and hours change, so exact five instead of six. Excellent, thank you. Okay, finance committee did not meet, but we're getting close to season for that, and also we've had some initial discussion among members, not everybody maybe, but, but definitely results come back from, you know, phase two, a parish farm, you know, it's not important to get a finance committee involved in discussing that. Okay, um, second period of public comment, again, um, three minutes where you come up, state your name and address, and then four is yours. Anyone who wants to speak? All right, and in the back there. I never go.
Carol Kinnman, eighty-five oh-two, Hall of Ridge, Corbin, Oak Ridge. Um, I just want to encourage staff and council to take a hard look at allowing concealed carry as part of their safety measures for the, uh, town hall meetings. Um, I worked in a facility in Greensboro at a time when things got pretty aggressive with, um, treatment towards healthcare workers, and we had several incidents, we had a very wide open office. People came in and did evaluations. We were then followed with active staff shooting, we were given, uh, training protocols, locking doors, doing a lot of other things that significantly changed the environment in terms of what people could get into and what we could do. And in that particular facility, it was a lot different than this town hall in that in the parking lot of the Greensboro Police Department SWAT team used to gather before the graves. That's the area that it was located in. And so my point is, I think you need to look at all these things, and it's all very important with whatever you come up to, but I feel much more threatened by people allowed to have concealed carry than I do having an active shooter come into this facility, and there are lots of other things we can do before we can react back. That's it.
Anyone else who speaks, public comments? Ms., Mrs. Please.
Todd Lindsey, eighty-seven four, Burtonwood, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. I just want to make this apparent. I am running for town council here in Oak Ridge, North Carolina, but I cannot do it. I cannot win the race without the support of the citizens of Oak Ridge, North Carolina. I totally agree with the comment about open arms and making sure not only council is protected, but also the citizens of Oak Ridge as well. I'm running for, for town council, but I'm doing it with integrity. I'm going to do it with logic. I'm going to do it with understanding, the understanding that I'm not the only one running. So for everyone that's involved and, and that's running, whether it's reelection or to be elected, these are times where we should be forming bonds in, uh, in hopes of continuing to grow Oak Ridge. I will say this, a vote for Todd Lindsey is a vote for park inclusiveness, progression, and development. A vote for Todd Lindsey is a vote for Oak Ridge Youth Association. Partnership, we should be working extremely hard to strengthen. A vote for Todd Lindsey has been the conduit between the council and the citizens of Oak Ridge. With that being said, thank you so much.
And what else, who speaks?
Adrian Hekman, five-six-seven-nine, Timbertrays Way. I'm trying to hit three points in three minutes to see if I can do it. First, on the security side, um, it's something I've dealt a lot with, that's part of my profession. I'm happy to assist with guidance or any free consultation, there's certainly a charge for me on any of those components. Uh, I've done a lot of this, uh, recently with large municipalities, did entire large community, um, Jewish community in Chicago, and several white areas have written about the successes we've had in that community. A little more relevant to here, I've done several churches' security assessments in the triad area, and so I happen to provide that guidance, as that's probably more in scope of what I see this year. I would, uh, like to reiterate, um, there's not, there's five individuals running for two open seats. Uh, there's not an individual running that I wouldn't be happy to break bread with and have a drink with. It's important that the residents understand the difference in those candidates that are running, so it's very important that I make differentiators of what is different between me and the other four candidates running. We missed the Heritage Day, we missed Ridge Fest, it's difficult to get out in front of the residents to make sure they understand the difference in those candidates. That's why I do weekly blog posts, I try and put as much information about myself. Uh, if that appears to my third point, I'll try and get, uh, some of the finance where anyone might not pull that up, um, very quickly. I do not make blanket promises, and I'm kind of ready for my blog post here if you'd like to give me more details, um, that's the finance department, but I do not make blanket promises about cutting your taxes. I make the commitments to a five to ten-year budget forecast. I would work systems and workflow optimizations to streamline processes, to improve, uh, and reduce, uh, the cost without sacrificing quality. I would work on data-driven decision-making, making sure that every dollar should deliver measurable value to residents, and work with the community-led review of partnering with our finance committee, which is citizen-based, and listen to that feedback before taking decisions are made. My commitment to Oak Ridge is that when the time comes to set our tax rate, I'll be transparent off impact on your bill. I will show exactly where the revenue will be used, and I will apply my decades of budgeting and operational experience, uh, to the Oak Ridge financial stability and efficiency. Thank you.
Anybody else who speaks?
Hi, Lindsay Clark, six-eight-one-six, Cala Drive, Oak Ridge. I'll keep this brief, I just wanted to touch on the, um, issue of security since the applicant has had addressed some thoughts on it, um, in case anyone watching or present is wondering my stance on it. Uh, I fully support having, uh, security here at the council meetings, um, and like you mentioned, uh, committing needs as well, assessing, you know, any security needs there. You know, it's something that no, who no one really likes to think about, or things will happen to them. Going to my backstory, I had a terrific attack, and that was in the adjacent building when there was the shooting there, so no one really thinks it's gonna happen until it does, and it is a one-off scenario, it can happen anywhere, anytime, um, to, you know, where it is expected. So I fully support having a, um, guard here, uh, but I do appreciate the council's discussion of other security measures and assessing, you know, what can be done in addition to that, uh, procedures, you know, to be prepared in the hopefully on my least scenario best that would happen, so that's my stance on it, and thank you for your discussion on it.
Anybody else who speaks? If not, we're supposed to public comment. We're going to go into closed session, so we'll take advantage of that, uh, council comments first. I'm trying to flip it each month, I, is, which side are you going first?
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, it sounds like, Todd, that you read my Facebook post on taxes, so I want to clarify a few things. First of all, we are the eleventh lowest tax, have the lowest tax, eleventh lowest tax rate in the state, so we're very, very low. Only fifty percent of our revenue comes from property taxes, so anytime we look at the property tax rate, we've got to look at everything else. Utility taxes are going down, sales taxes are projected to go down because stump sale is now going to, uh, because of the recent legislation, it's going to take a cut of the pot. I'd be happy to sit down, but better than that, we should sit down with Bill Bruce because he basically knows everything. And when I said for most people, twenty percent doesn't get them, I meant that for most people, because I also said I would look carefully at how any change in the property tax amounts affect our citizens. I also think that it's important that we look at everything. That includes our strategic direction for the town, what we're planning to do, and that goes to what Debbie was talking about, about looking at budget impact, and that's why we have a finance committee, so that they can look at all of this holistically, and inflation, as Lindsey brought up, is also a factor. I think I promise to do this carefully and thoughtfully with the guidance of our citizens and our citizen finance committee, and our finance officer, who's a partner, who sits on that committee as well, and our county manager, because we can't just do sort of unilateral slash. But I also am working with county commissioners, uh, as I said, I think in my blog post, I mean my Facebook post, sorry, that, uh, Pat Tolman is trying, has already committed to try and work with the commissioner to make the revaluation revenue neutral from their standpoint, because remember, it's, they're the ones who are really instigating all of this, so they bear a lot of responsibility, and I would say that the commissioner, as I've said to him, and I'm going to say to other commissioners, that when you do this, you squeeze our small towns. They have a lot of room to lower taxes, we do not. Eight cents, when our population is growing, which means we have to provide more services, we have more people to serve, and that's a burden on staff and pushes everything a little bit out. All of these things need to be considered. The book, take a look at the book out there today. It is a true labor of love by all involved, Sandra Smith, uh, Carol Keating, who's the graphic designer, Debbie, who helped lead the project, and, you know, I did the editing, which is, it was actually also a labor of love, and I think all of you who love Oak Ridge will love that book also. Uh, I did attend the recent LEED board meeting, instead of going through what we did at that meeting, I'll share that with council, but I just want you to know that Oak Ridge is active at the state level in lots of different ways. Mayor Kinnman went to the mayor's association meeting, I serve on the board of that organization, and it's just an amazing words I view of what's going on across the state. Elections, they're coming up. Early voting starts October sixteenth in several locations, but not here in Oak Ridge. So if you vote on Election Day, you number four, however, you have to go to your assigned precinct, and whenever you vote, remember to bring your photo ID, but most importantly, remember to vote and bring your friends with you. I believe that Oak Ridge needs leadership to move our town forward with a shared vision and strategic direction. I believe I've provided that kind of direction during my time on council, and I hope to continue doing so if reelected. Although there are certainly politics involved in certain campaigning process, I agree with what Adrian said. I'd be happy to talk to any of my fellow candidates at any time and sit down and break bread together. But I don't consider my work on town council as political. It's a public service, pure and simple, not in the spirit of volunteerism, with the goal always of doing what's best for Oak Ridge. I believe I've shown that kind of dedication in my long history of volunteering for our community, our community, including through the town, various service clubs, my church, PTO boards at every school my three kids attended, and with our local scout troops. I also serve at the state level, as I mentioned, and also through the Hunter Institute. All of this energizes me and motivates me to want to do even more for Oak Ridge, because I truly believe we are a model small town, mostly because of our amazing volunteers who do so much. They help create the community spirit and the bonding that makes Oak Ridge so special. We need to nurture and support those volunteers, just as we need to nurture and support our amazing, dedicated, and highly qualified professional staff. They manage every aspect of what our town actually does. This is the community that I want to serve. Thank you.
Main thing is, I just want to reiterate, if you do early voting, you can register to vote if you're not registered, but if you're not registered to vote, you will not be able to, you will not be able to register on the day of the November fourth. So make sure if you're not registered, make sure that you get registered through early voting or by voting conversion. Uh, it's important that you vote, that's the extent of what I will comment on about elections. As always, I encourage people to donate blood every even month. I mentioned the Methodist Church, not because I'm connected with them, but because I know that every time I have a blood drive, it's been long enough that you donate blood. They don't, they have a blood drive every even month, the, the second Tuesday, second Monday of the every even month, they have a blood drive. Summit Church also had blood drives, Central Baptist also had blood drives, you can also go downtown and donate wherever you feel like it. But it, it, it's amazing, we have not been able to find a substitute for blood, so if you're able to donate blood, it's a way to basically help three people. It is, like I said, I unfortunately cannot give anymore, uh, but it is amazing feeling we sit down and donate blood. I've, I've, I've been able since I was eighteen years old. So if you're able to donate blood, please do. With that, I'd like to motion to go into closed session, discuss a people matter with council. Yes, you want to address the town council? Just saying, I mean, I, 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 we're not around for elections, so, I mean, we're not done for elections, so, away. Thank you so much, I'm so, I, I said, muscle memory, muscle memory, I apologize, Mr. Stone. Thank you. That's quite all right. I said muscle memory. Okay. Uh, this month, participated in a sheriff's roundtable, uh, downtown Greensboro with the Sheriff's Department, very informed about crime, staff, safety, security, and efforts of the deputy sheriffs in the area, the staff that I want to make sure everybody's aware of, I think it's interesting we're talking about security tonight, um, but there's only thirty, thirty deputies between Sunfield, Stokeville, Oak Ridge, and Colfax, okay? And that's twenty-four seven, so what you're really talking about is six or seven police officers on duty at any one time, but best protection right now is legally armed system, okay? Concealed carry is legal in North Carolina, uh, and it's a medium safeguard of, I tell y'all, you might want to consider that. Um, I wasn't going to talk about taxes, but I heard everybody talking about it. Uh, the only thing that I'll mention is, we hear the staff about we're the eleventh lowest tax rate in North Carolina, well, here we are, because we're providing services, okay? We're not Greensboro, we're not MST, we're not Burgess, and we don't want to be. So the fact that we're paying lower taxes than some, that's how it is provided loosely pickup and, you know, police departments and, uh, everything else, it goes, oh, we don't want to be that, so we ought to be. So we ought to be the eleventh lowest or tenth lowest or lowest here. Um, but we, the elector town council, do have control of the taxes paid by Oak Ridge citizens for the Oak Ridge taxes, and that's what you should be thinking about. Please get out and vote, vote like you're walking hands on it, because it does. Mr. Grayson? This will be pretty common. Thirty-four days to election, let's see how, uh, everybody votes for you. Hold on. World peace. I'm not gonna bore you people about my politics or anything, I'm not running for reelection. Thank you. And I apologize, I said muscle, muscle memory, I was trying to.
You're lucky.
Jim Harton. Jim, you're running for reelection?
Okay, uh, first of all, I want to thank the rest of council, um, and apologize to the town for not being here last month. The Tuesday before the last meeting, uh, I got a phone call from a friend that I had, his wife, that we, we sit with him at Lake Forest Ball Games, and we, we ended it together, uh, over the weekend, and my friend Tuesday wanted to say, guess what, we have COVID. And about that time, my wife walked in and said, I don't feel very well. And I said, it's probably because you have COVID. So she tested, and she had COVID, I tested, and Ox's son had COVID. And I contacted the mayor and others and said, I don't think it's wise for me to be at the next town council meeting. I will, uh, attend by the zoom. The other reason for that is I knew that, uh, Councilman Schneider, uh, since I sat next to her, and, uh, I knew that, let's see, that was Thursday, so I think the two days later, her son was getting married, so it's already a little kind of exposure, and COVID. Uh, she had enough on her mind, I wouldn't worry about that. So again, apologies, but I thought that was the best decision for me and the town. Now, having said that, I did view everything, and I can tell you that, uh, I don't know what's better, sitting here or watching. But I think sitting here is better, because watching these council meetings can, can, can be a little misleading if you don't have all the information and facts to clarify. The last thing I would say goes back to, uh, something my friend Mr. Grayson said, but I think it was two meetings he had since I was a year. Our, our Mr. Thomas Christine Lawyer said that Roger Howerton led the shortest cow leading in Oak Ridge history in nineteen minutes. I would like to suggest that we, uh, adopt the unit of measure for time, Howerton in nineteen minutes. And if that's the case, we're running almost to five Howertons.
Count, Councilman Harton?
Pardon me?
I, I believe it was actually twelve minutes.
Twelve, well, maybe seven. If I had done that, that's maybe nineteen. But, um, I suggest we have, uh, Howerton, Mr. Howerton, you, you do the measure.
Have I allowed anyone to speak? I apologize, I got a bunch of awesome ideas. Are we ready to now go into closed session? Thank you for, uh, humorably picking up my two minutes. Uh, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Shout out.
Is there a second side? All those say hi.
Hi.
We'll be jumping off. Jeez, not at all.